Unfortunately, my husband has not traveled since before COVID. I'm going to take this off so we can hear while we're doing this part. Actually, Jeff wanted to make an announcement about masks.
Yes. The policy, if you're unvaccinated, we ask that you wear a mask. If you're vaccinated, what you're comfortable with.
And when we're speaking, we'll take off our masks so you can understand us. My husband's not traveled since before COVID, so let him in the middle so I can reach the book. And this week he's in California.
Oh.
My son and my daughter.
Get out of the way. I'm going to come down.
You're going to come down, okay.
So the way this is going to work tonight is we're going to take our oaths. And then there's this book that's super cool. It's a public document if you ever wanted to look at it. Officials who've taken office as board members or justices or trustees and mayors all sign these books over time. So Catherine's name is on previous pages. And Tweets and I are on previous pages.
So we'll be signing, swearing in Kathleen first, followed by each of the trustees. And just before starting, to add to what Kathleen said, I'd love to add my personal thanks to everyone being sworn in this evening. All of you have served in both public, you know, in official and unofficial roles, serving our community. And I've had the pleasure to work with most of you, and our community is better for it.
Thank you. I'm so proud. Can you come this way so I can look at Camille? You come over here. So I am being sworn in on a copy of the Constitution, a book of poetry by John O'Donoghue.
Okay. And raising, this way, yeah.
There we go.
Kathleen, please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the mayor of the village of Cold Spring.
Of the office of the mayor of the village of Cold Spring.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Now you're going to make me. According to the best of my ability.
And if you would please sign the Book of Oaths.
Thank you.
You will be official.
Real estate.
Oh, but can we keep the Constitution, please? Tweets, if you would come up, please. There you are. This is a handy pocket Constitution. So if you would please place your left hand on the Constitution, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of trustee of the village of Cold Spring.
Of trustee of the village of Cold Spring.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you. And Eliza, if you could come up, please. Placing your left hand on the Constitution and raising your right hand. And turning for landscape view. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of trustee of the village of Cold Spring.
The duties of the office of trustee of the village of Cold Spring.
And that according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Catherine? Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will fulfill the duties.
And I will fulfill the duties.
Of the office of trustee of the village of Cold Spring.
Of the office of the, duties of the village. See what I mean?
Of the office of trustee.
The office of trustee.
Of the village of Cold Spring.
Of the village of Cold Spring.
To the best of my ability.
To my ability.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take our seats and call the meeting to order. So this day marks the first day on the village calendar. The year starts fresh, so we're all together. We are going to try to be in person as long as we can so that we can build rapport among the board in person and with all of you before we, seems like undoubtedly, head off to Zoom again. So thank you for being here and thank you for masking up and keeping each other safe. So the organizational meeting is required under the law to reorganize the village, to make appointments for certain staff positions, responsibilities for the boards of trustees, making appointments to standing boards, setting a schedule for meetings, naming entities that serve the village for banking purposes, noticing, council, that sort of thing. So we'll be doing that official work tonight, and then we have just a couple of items of business to take up after that. And the first item gives me tremendous joy and I, with enthusiasm and gratitude, appoint Joe Curdo as village trustee to complete my term on the village board.
Book to be sworn in. Placing your left hand on the Constitution and raising your right hand and repeating after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will fulfill the duties of trustee.
And that I will fulfill the duties of trustee.
Of the village of Cold Spring.
Of the village of Cold Spring.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Almost said "I'll" then.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
Wow, no, it just feels great. Thank you very much. And in the fine tradition of democracy, some of us have been rivals, and now we are partners in service. And we are all neighbors. So I'm really happy to be here with these folks. Our resident appointments, the positions that are required by the state, by state law to be residents of the municipality. And the first is Jeff Vodakovitch as village clerk. I make a motion to appoint Jeff for a two-year term to village clerk and treasurer.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I want to very quickly thank Jeff. Jeff is the institutional knowledge right now. There has been zero willingness for transition, and Jeff has been such a rock in the last 48 hours, transitioning and teaching and getting us all on board. So we're really grateful and imagine picking your brain quite a lot going forward. Second is I make a motion to appoint Anne Bouchard as registrar of vital records for a one-year term. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, non-resident appointments. These are positions that do not have to be held by village residents. First is Matt Krug. I make a motion to appoint Matt Krug as water and wastewater superintendent for a one-year term.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I make a motion to appoint Larry Burke, officer in charge of the Cold Spring Police Department, for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to recognize Larry very briefly. He makes community engagement a top priority, and it is, it is recognized around the village. You really set the tone for our officers, and you lead by example. And in the last two weeks, I think this is sort of indicative of Larry as a leader, in the last two weeks, three of our officers have been recognized by folks in the community for work that they've done above and beyond. One of them was recognized with a personal letter, one was recognized with a letter to the editor, and another was recognized with freshly baked cookies, which is probably the best award of all. But that says everything about the tone that Larry sets for the department. So, thank you. We're enthusiastic about you. Before she speaks out, we get to appoint Camille to a one-year term as acting and associate justice for the village. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now mayor and the board. So first, our offices required of the mayor and the board under state law. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tweets Phillips Woods as our deputy mayor. And this requires a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I vote? Sure. You should still live. Next is budget officer. This is customarily the mayor. I will be leaning heavily on the experience and expertise of trustee Curdo and trustee Fatty. Joe was, as most of you know, involved with the school board for many years and pivotal in budget development and capital project development at the school. So I'd be drawing on your expertise. And of course, Catherine is a former trustee and a small business owner. And we're all looking to you for good guidance and good direction. So because this is me.
I make a motion to appoint Catherine Foley as our budget officer.
Second. All in, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is the Board of Water Commissioners. The Board of Trustees under code, chapter 130, acts as the Board of Water Commissioners, making legislative and functional decisions related to delivery of public water. So I move that we appoint ourselves as the water commissioners.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is assignment to the audit committee. The audit committee consists of two trustees who come in and review bills, sign off on invoices, check, check spending on a weekly basis with the, with the treasurer and accountant, and also deal with payroll. So I would make a motion to appoint trustee Curdo and trustee Fatty to that position.
For a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is insurance and risk management. This committee reviews coverage for the village's assets, identifying exposures, and working with our insurance company to manage risk for the village tax payer. And I would like to appoint trustee Curdo and trustee Woods to this position. I make a motion.
For a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we move to area of work assignments. And tonight, we are well and truly reorganizing the village. I believe, and I think it's fair to say, that everyone at the table with me recognize and really believe that the village is run by its employees. These are the folks with content expertise, who are in the field day in and day out, and whose skills and knowledge are invaluable to the community. And our job as mayor and trustees is to make sure that the staff has the tools they need to do their job well. Budget, equipment, sound, rational code, and legislation. In previous years, people will remember that trustees were assigned as liaisons to various departments and boards. And now, department heads will meet weekly with me and the deputy mayor as a management team so that our departments have clear lines of communication for goal-setting and project coordination and progress reports. Department heads will continue to make their public monthly reports. But when we meet for a team, a management team, for the first time on Thursday, we're going to talk about ways we can make their reports useful for the public in terms of need-to-know information, ongoing project updates, and future project planning. So I hope that monthly reports can become a little more fun to listen to and a little more fun for the staff to deliver. Just fun, but useful. So deputy mayor Woods brings her wealth of experience from the mayor's office of operations in New York. So I asked Tweets to review our reporting structures and make recommendations for how we could improve efficiencies, reduce bottlenecks, and increase productivity. And she proposed organizing the management of the village into work areas. We have assigned trustees to those areas, and for various projects, each trustee will be a lead contact and report up to the mayor. And that's why you'll see on the, on the agenda, my name's included in all the work areas. So that kind of management organization will ensure that knowledge is spread across the full board. And that's really important for organizational and institutional health and longevity, for there to be information in everyone's heads. I think we all need to do our jobs as if we're not going to show up tomorrow. Joan knows that I like to say if you get hit by a bus, somebody else can pick up your job and do it for you. So after this evening, I'm going to work with each trustee. Tweets and I will work with each trustee in greater detail on assignments, and we'll coordinate with our department leads and chairs. The first, I'm going to ask trustee Starbuck to make the motion on.
I make a motion to assign Mayor Foley and trustee Woods to the office of mayor and clerk.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next area of work is budget and financial management. And I make a motion to appoint trustee Curdo and trustee Woods.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is emergency, excuse me, emergency management and public safety. This is an area where we want to think about preparedness. We want to think about storm preparedness. We want to make sure that we have clean lines of communication among all of our first responders and village hall. And we want to make sure that when, you know, when we were in Superstorm, which was a Superstorm Sandy, folks will remember that we were effectively cut off from, from emergency management services on the other side of the county, and Phillips Town really needed to stand on its own. And the town has built a robust emergency preparedness system, and we need to make sure that the village is at the table for those conversations and preparations. So that is the role of that portion. So I could ask you to make that again.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Foley and trustee Woods to the emergency management and public safety assignment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is highway, I'm sorry, water and sewer. And I would like to appoint trustees Curdo and Woods to that assignment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye. Next is highway, maintenance, garbage, and recycling. And again, I'd like to appoint trustees Curdo and Woods.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Next is communication and technology. Looking at things like how we, when we do have to go to Zoom, if we have the capacity for us to be spread out in a room together and broadcasting live, that's one of the first things I want to look at so that we can. The beautiful thing about Zoom is that we get not just a few people in the room, but we get 40, 50, sometimes 70 people on a village call. And that doesn't happen in person. So we want to be able to continue to make that prospect available for people to be, be able to participate from home. And to that, I'd like to appoint trustee Starbuck and trustee Woods. Can I make that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next zoning and land use. And I would move to appoint trustee Starbuck and trustee Woods.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Now the next two really focus in on work that trustee Fatty began in her, in her last round as trustee and showed competence and skill. And I'd like to take advantage of the knowledge you've built over time.
Happy to do it.
First is pedestrian safety, parking, and traffic. And I move to appoint trustee Fatty and trustee Starbuck to that work area.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And last, parks and rec, community events, and tourism. And I make a motion to appoint trustee Fatty and trustee Starbuck to that as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, the next section is legal requirements that we have to do related to policies. We'll be naming, it's customarily the mayor. In the past, there has not been an alternate. These are things like equal employment officer, workplace violence, sexual harassment prevention, ADA compliance officer, procurement and investment policies, which are laid out in the trustee handbook. Oh, sorry, I've gone on. We'll come back to those two. So of the three, there has not been an alternate to the mayor. And I think we also, we should always entertain the possibility that someone might feel threatened by me or for whatever it might, reason it might be, and should have someone else to go to. So I'd like to, Tweets to be the alternate. So if I could ask you to make the motion.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Foley and alternate Tweets Woods as the equal employment officer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
I make a motion to appoint Mayor Foley with.
This is, this one is actually, sorry. I took you down all the way, but this is, these are actually just identifying the sources of the policies. Sorry about that. The first is procurement and investment, which is laid out in the trustee handbook. And the second is the ethics policy as per village code, chapter nine. So I'll make a motion that we are securing the language for those policies and procedures from those sources.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, appointments to standing boards. So the standing boards are serious work. They make decisions based on facts of applications and the law. And the positions require diplomacy and careful consideration and a commitment to time away from our families, from, from board members' families, and whatever other duties they have in their lives. And we're grateful to villagers who step up and serve. We have the newest member of the planning board is with us tonight, Yazlan Daniels. So now we're going to make appointments to the rest of the standing boards. First, the recreation commission. I make a motion to appoint Jeff Amato as chair for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. To the planning board, I make a motion to appoint Jack Goldstein as a member for a five-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And I appoint, I would like to appoint Jack Goldstein as chair for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I say aye. Historic district review board, appointment of Todd Seacverture for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And I would make a motion to appoint Elle Skalinski as chair for a one-year, for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Zoning Board of Appeals, I make a motion to appoint Mary Ann Rimi for a five-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Congratulations, Mary Ann. And you will be, trustee Starbuck will recuse herself from this vote. I make a motion to appoint Eric Worth as chair for one year on the ZBA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's a four-oh vote. Congratulations, Eric. Last, tree advisory board, appointment of Tony Bartis and Jen Zworek as members to three-year terms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Appointment of Jen Zworek, I nominate her as chair for one-year term.
For a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, we're getting there. We're almost done with the, with the roach stuff. So meetings. We're going to shift things up a little bit on meeting days. One of the, some of the feedback that we've gotten is that it would be nice if the monthly meetings of the town board, the school board, and the village board weren't happening on the same night. So we're going to, we're going to try this, and hopefully Zoom will make it all a little bit easier as time goes on. But we're going to switch to Wednesdays. And so that allows school board on Tuesday, village board on Wednesday, town board on Thursday, and the public doesn't have the same conflict for attending. We had to, I want to thank the HDRB and the tree advisory board for shifting their time slightly to accommodate that, and we'll see how it goes. So monthly business meetings will continue in the second week, on the second Wednesday, and workshops will be on the first, third, and fourth Wednesdays as we meet them. So I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I make a motion.
Kathleen? Just to clarify, all meetings will begin at seven o'clock.
All meetings will begin at seven o'clock. Thank you, Jeff. And that gives folks time to grab dinner and either get back to Billithall or get on Zoom.
And that's going to start in January.
Starting in January. Thank you for that clarification, yes. We'll continue, we have our last Tuesday monthly meeting on December the 14th. And then we'll all take a break for holiday and start fresh and ready to go in the new year, the first Wednesday with a workshop. Okay, setting agendas. We follow the, the template laid out in the trustee handbook, making modifications as we need to to meet the needs of business that evening. So I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We draw our general procedures, procedures for calling special meetings, and guidelines for public comment per the trustee handbook. I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay. The acceptance of the fee schedule. So the last administration very wisely pulled fees out of the text of the code so that they, they sit in a living document that can be more readily modified without law change. So in your packet, you have a copy of the established fee schedule, and we need to adopt that on a yearly basis. And then as we modify, if we do need to modify through the year, it comes to vote. So I would move that we accept the, the fee proposal as laid out in the supporting materials.
For a second?
All in favor?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Just a clarification, the off-street parking fee in lieu of $250 per space, is that per year or is that a one-time fee?
That is a one-time fee.
Okay.
And that goes back to code that was passed in 2010, I believe. Was intended, the intention of, of that law was to, when retail changed, when, when, when a, a retail use became a new use, when a new use came into a retail space, it would capture income related to parking impacts on Main Street. But of course, we're not creating, we're not creating new spaces. The, the thinking, the legislative intent behind it was that we want to keep Main Street flowing and turning and a retail use to a retail use. It's an opportunity to, I'm not explaining this very well. It's a very, it is a very, it's a very complex fee that results in income for the village that we put toward offsetting parking impacts without building a new space. So there you have it. And we, we have inherited it, and so we will learn to work with it. Okay. Did we take a vote on the fee?
No.
Okay, so we, we have a second, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
I, I vote aye. Last, naming of official depositories. M&amp;T Bank has our holdings, and the signatories on the bank account will be the clerk, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and trustee Curdo. I make that motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Naming of official newspaper. The state does lay out requirements for what can be defined as an official newspaper, including circulation numbers, home delivery, paid, paid subscription. And the paper that we have in the, in the community that meets all the criteria requires the PCNR. So I first make a motion to name the PCNR the official newspaper of record for the village. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The Highlands Current has sent a request, was received late yesterday, to be considered as an alternate. The town does use the, the Current as an alternate, and one of our standing boards currently advertises public meetings and hearings in the Current. But because of, because they don't have the circulation, they don't meet the circulation requirements. We can't name them an alternate paper. But I would like to encourage us to continue as the board has done in the last year when there are big meetings and important events to, to also advertise in the Current because it reaches a, you know, a different demographic. And I would like to encourage the same of our standing boards. What's folks feeling about that? Do you think that makes a lot of sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have communicated to Chip that response, and that I would like to talk with him about the possibility of establishing a rate, a special rate for the village. Okay, last, almost last, appointment of village council. Well, we will continue working with the village council that we have now for continuity and also institutional memory. I make a motion to appoint John First of Catania Mayan and Ryder PLLC.
For a seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That closes the appointment portion and the, the reorganization portion. And now welcome officer in charge Burke in. We do have a resolution before us to accept a bid for the replacement of a, of a police vehicle. So if you could give the public an update on how we got here, how the vehicle is in the condition it is in, and why we are proceeding in the way we are this evening.
It was on approximately November first or second, one of the officers was coming into work, which happened to be me. And I was coming down through the village. I just had hit the intersection of Main Street and, and nine D. I had the steady green light, and a vehicle traveling southbound on nine D proceeded to come out right in front of me. I struck the vehicle, causing damage to both vehicles. The individual in the other car was not injured, refused medical aid. I was taken Hudson Valley Hospital for evaluation. I was cleared. I came back. The front of the vehicle is pretty smashed in. So basically, we left it up to the insurance company to take a look at it. They came and took a look at it, decided that the frame was bent and the vehicle was, would cost more money to repair than it would have been to replace it. Also, due to having a police vehicle, by state law, if the frame is damaged, you cannot insure the vehicle again for proper police work. So basically, what they, they told me and they told the village that it was totaled. So they totaled the vehicle out. And with that, I proceeded to go also with Michelle, the accountant, to go put to a state bid for a vehicle which we need ASAP. We have an older fleet, we have an older fleet now. That was one of the newer vehicles we had, it was 2016 Charger. And right now, due to the shortage of, of chips and everything else, the vehicle we had ordered way back in June, hopefully we're gonna get that sometime in the winter. I have no idea when we'll get that. So we found a vehicle through state bid, upstate New York, up in, I think it's Niagara Falls. So we went through the process of doing that, which, state bid goes out for anywhere between three and five days, where any dealership can bid on the vehicle, a vehicle, the way we need it. So we found one, we put a bid in, they won, they won the bid. So we're just waiting for the village, the mayor and the board to okay the proceeds to go forward. And as soon as we do that, I can actually order the vehicle, get the vehicle down here to get it outfitted with the police equipment we need, which is a cage, the lights and everything else that needs to be on a police car. And that's all we're waiting for. That's about it.
Okay, and you're, you're facing the same kinds of supply line issues that the whole country is, is facing?
Every police vehicle that I've looked at in the last past six to seven months, just in general, to look at things, every time we look at something, it's scooped up. I mean, police departments are like grabbing any vehicles they can at this point because their fleets are getting older, they, they need cars, and we're fighting a, you know, a limited supply. And you want the vehicle there. Like I said, the one we ordered way back in June, like I said, I don't know when it's gonna be built. They're telling me it's gonna be, started being built in December, that means we're not gonna see it till February by the time it's all done through the factory. So this, this dealership has it there on, on the property. So that's why we really needed to move quickly. Because I know there was a bunch of police, other police departments trying to get vehicles as we speak.
And what's the proposed date that they'll be done?
As soon as we, as soon as we get the okay, and they get the PO tomorrow. I talked to Michelle, as long as it's approved, we'll get, we'll get the PO tomorrow. We, they should be to the outfitter, hopefully within a week. And I'm pushing the outfitter to get it to us as fast as possible because we are, we have a 2011 Crown Vic that, that's being held together by duct tape and everything else. We have the Tahoe, and we have the, the last new used vehicle, which is the, the 2018 Explorer. So they assuredly, we get to it ASAP, as soon as, as soon as they get it in. But the dealership has to deliver it to them, which is a great thing. In the past, we had to send two officers out to pick them up, and they're gonna deliver it right to the, the outfitter, which is right in Waupour Falls.
Any other questions from the board?
Did we state that it was gonna be covered, the insurance covers it all? Yes?
The insurance covers, I talked to Michelle on this, insurance, the village is responsible. I believe she said to me today about seventeen percent of the type, of the entire vehicle. The vehicle is covered completely. The brand, the vehicle will come at a state bid, it's covered completely by the insurance. We'll get a brand-new 2021 Dodge Charger. The other stuff they will not cover, which is the emergency lights, which is the cage, which is the laptop and stuff that's already in that car, whatever we can salvage from the older car, which we're gonna salvage the cage. The cage, I mean, the separation between the, the backseat and front seat for the prisoner and the officer for safety. That's gonna be salvaged. So whatever we get out of that car to save us money, we've, we've already have it in the, in the bid, and they're willing to do that for us. So that saved us quite a bit of money. Believe me, I, I try any way I can to save us, save us money as best I can. So they were, they're willing to do some of that. Some of the equipment is older, and they can't be salvaged. So, but we're going through everything. There's a bunch of stuff that we're gonna be pulling from the old vehicle and putting into the new.
It's the total cost for the new car outfitted is $44,000. We're getting back approximately $33,000 from insurance. There might be a little bit more. They'll pay for the decal work, some of the equipment that if it was damaged in the accident, they will reimburse us for it, and then some of the costs for swapping it out. At the end of the day, we're probably about $8,000 out of pocket for a new vehicle. The insurance, that will pile through the way it works, is that with the police cars, anything that's less than 10 years old, we get the full replacement value to buy a car at today's value, when one's totaled.
So if I saw some of the memos and such, we're gonna salvage the car too? The damaged car? We're gonna sell it for salvage?
It may be auctionable, is what I understand.
Fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred bucks was mentioned in something.
Yeah, through, through talking with the insurance company, basically, if we want to keep the vehicle, we'd have to pay out about $1,600, and then we would try to put it up on an auction. Or we can just let the insurance company take it, and they'll minus the $1,600 off of what they're gonna cover.
Okay.
From what I understand, it's right around there, sixteen, sixteen fifty. You know, it's, it's a total, excuse the language, crapshoot. If you do put it up for bid, you can put it out there, and somebody say, I'll, I'll bid you $500, and, you know, that's, that's what we'll get back. Not that, I'm not, no. Shaking, a stake of $500 is $500, believe me. But we're gonna try both ways to be able to do that.
So as I kind of summarize this, and I know nothing about police vehicles, other than just common sense of adding numbers and using practicality, we're gonna replace a 2016 car that constantly needed work with a 2021, and it's gonna cost us about seven grand out of pocket. We're modernizing the fleet, which is gonna save us on repairs and maintenance, which we were spending on the other car. We're ultimately potentially gonna defer a purchase of a new car in the future because that's gonna change that cycle of replacement, because we've got the new one coming in. And when the new Ford gets delivered, the Explorer, which Michelle today said, they started production. So Michelle called, I guess, whoever she calls, the factory.
They call the dealership, the dealership, we have an order number that's assigned to us that we got way back in June, and they supposedly just started the bill, like they said, the second week of December. And that, you know, that's, again, that could be a week earlier, a week later, but we're still, you know, waiting on to define what they're, supposed to build it, start the second week of December.
Got it.
That takes six to eight weeks just to build it.
So when they deliver the Explorer, we're gonna have two brand-new cars out of the five. We typically have four, and then the one probably will come off that fleet. So two of the four cars will be brand-new cars.
Exactly.
So the way I kind of look at this is it makes perfect sense economically and practically speaking, just based on all the information that you guys gave.
Just to add a little on that too, before I, I was the officer in charge, the last vehicle, which is the Charger that was purchased by the other officer in charge, is a rear-wheel drive, six-cylinder car. So basically, it, you know, come, when it hit a little bit of snow, it's a rear-wheel drive car. Now we're getting an all-wheel drive, six-cylinder car. So that's also gonna help.
Right. And not related to any of this, Michelle, the controller, who we met with today for ninety minutes, is an absolute gem.
She is absolutely.
So she is an unbelievable asset to the village, and everyone in the community should knock on village hall and say, Michelle, thank you. She really is an unbelievable person, and is such a great asset to the village, and I can't wait to dig into the budget with her. So for whatever that's worth, she really is.
There was some nerd bonding today?
Yes.
Believe me, I tell her I found the best deal, and all of a sudden, she's like, no, I just found us another hundred dollars off. I'm like, go for it. I'm more than happy.
So she's a huge asset to the village.
And this is why Joe is gonna be the budget guy. Thank you, thank you very much, trustee Curdo. I wonder, I know you have to get, Larry is also a volunteer firefighter, and there is an election at both the Cold Spring Fire Company tonight and at North Highlands where Larry serves, so I know you need to get out the door. But if you could, very briefly, because I think it's an important thing to understand, explain why we have one officer on duty at a time, but we ideally have four vehicles in the fleet.
Yes, the four, the four vehicles in, in, in any type of fleet, you don't wanna keep using the same vehicle in Oregon. A lot of people look at vehicles and say, well, how many miles can, can a car in a small village put on? It's not the mileage on the car, it's the hours of the motor. So back in the day, there used to be a hour meter on your vehicle, and you could tell how many actual, actual hours that the motor was running. So basically, you wanna try to lengthen that out as long as we can, because you don't wanna be buying a new car every, you know, every year. Ultimately, a police vehicle, in my opinion, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years now, realistically, anything, and when you talk about miles and you talk about years, most of the police departments, as soon as the vehicle hits 40,000 miles, but they also have a bigger area to cover, they get rid of the vehicle, because then you're coming into major repairs. The 2016 Charger, before it got into the accident, we probably put close to $10,000 in that car. It could have been a lemon, it could have been, who knows? The front end had to replace, there was a bunch of stuff that was actually covered originally by the, by the dealership, by the, by the warranty. As soon as we had a warranty, everything started falling apart. So basically, when you have a fleet of, of one officer per shift, you want to have at least four vehicles. Because if one vehicle goes down for maintenance, then you have three vehicles, which you gotta cover a day shift, which is an eight to four, a four to twelve, and a midnight shift. You do not want a vehicle running for sixteen hours straight, if you can avoid that. That puts more wear and tear on the car, puts more wear and tear on the oil and, and the motor and the transmission. So the issues that we've been having since I started here in 2013, it was always, we're not gonna get a new car for three or four years, stretch the car out to ten years, and by that time, you've already put so much money into a vehicle that, that to replace, you know, all sorts of mechanical things. I'm not just talking about oil changes and brakes and stuff like that, it's just wear and tear in general. Living close to the water, our vehicles are kept outside, down by the highway garage. You're also talking about rust, you're also, and other things that go on with, with the vehicles, being out in the, the snow and the rain and everything else. So for me to run a, a fleet, I would need at least four vehicles. My wish to be new board, and we'll get into this later on, and I understand we're gonna be having a couple of new vehicles, which is great. I would like to, every two years, try to get a new vehicle, because if we're gonna have a fleet of four, by the time that fourth one's replaced, you're into the eighth year. I have a whole spreadsheet out of how many repairs, how much the repairs are for all the vehicles. I will, I'll be giving that to the board when we meet later on, of each vehicle, how much it costs per year, as long as we've had the vehicles. So that's really why you want to have at least four vehicles.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's really helpful. I understand, but thank you.
Okay, well, I will put the resolution forward, resolution eighty-six dash twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the village of Cold Spring needs to purchase a new vehicle to replace the 2016 Dodge Charger that was damaged beyond repair, whereas the village solicited bids through the New York State Vehicle Marketplace mini-bid system, and whereas the village received a total of one bid, and therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the purchase of an outfitted 2021 Dodge Charger to Falls Dodge, Inc., doing business as Joe Kachonas Chrysler Complex at a cost of $44,062.90 plus any incidental fees, including delivery, title, registration, et cetera. And this is a roll call vote.
Well, first, I need someone to make the motion.
Oh, so I make the motion. All right, pardon me.
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, no, no, now it's a roll call. I'm gonna get it.
Trustee Curdo?